Jennifer. I call this meeting of the Lancaster County Planning Commission to order. Would the please, would the clerk please call the roll?
Francis Lou?
Here.
Sheila Henson?
Here.
Michelle Richards?
Here.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg?
Here.
Lynette Henson?
Here.
Yoko McCurton?
Here.
Jason Cavalier?
Here.
Would the clerk please make a note on the record that the quorum of the Planning Commission is present, the public notice of the meeting, including the meeting agenda, has been posted, the required length of time in the lobby of the county administration building and on the county website, and that the news media was notified of the meeting time and place. Welcome everyone to the Lancaster County Planning Commission meeting. Please make sure your electronic devices are silenced or turned off and abide the posted rules of the room, no hats, shirts on please, and let's have a good meeting. Now if everyone would please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone would remain standing, we'll have a prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, please be with us tonight as we go about the business of Lancaster County. Please give us the wisdom and the foresight to make good decisions about the growth and future of our county and its residents and the businesses that do work here. Please guide the audience to give us the information we need to help make good decisions and always keep us in your prayers and love us. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Ms. Curton motions, Ms. Sheila Henson seconds. Show of hands. Vote is unanimous. Next we have approval of the minutes. Two different ones, the minutes from the May 20th, 25, regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a, I have one, two comments.
Motion first.
I have a motion, I have two comments and adjustments to it.
Okay, motion first.
Yes, I make a motion to amend the minutes.
Okay.
There we go. You gave me the hint, but my brain wasn't taking it.
Got it.
If you look on, well, my first thing is, can we please get page numbers on these? I dropped them and then spent five minutes getting them back in order so that I could finish reviewing them. So this would be on, it is from item number six on the third page of that, and it's just a minor little typo under public hearing. There's just a typo, it says from Thomas Crump's comments, it says the danger to danger, I think it should be the danger of danger to students. Just a minor thing, but the page numbers would really be helpful. That was the only comment I had.
Any other discussion commissioners? Okay, we have a motion to approve with amendment as Ms. Richards stated.
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Motion from Ms. Richards, second from Ms. Lynette Henson. Show of hands. Vote is unanimous. Next is the minutes from the June 5th, 2025 workshop meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Curton motion to approve, Ms. Sheila Henson second. Show of hands. Vote is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Ms. Henson, were you present at the May 20th meet, planning meeting?
That's right, you weren't.
I was not.
I think you were else, so I think it'd be an abstention.
I was not at the meeting, that's correct. I was at the workshop, not the meeting.
Okay, so we mixed them up then.
I'll make that six to zero with an abstention by Ms. Henson.
Just housekeeping.
Thank you.
Good call, Ms. Lou, thank you very much. All right, now we're into citizens' comments. We'll have to work on our order here, Ms. It's okay. All right, we have one person signed in for citizens' comments. When I call your name, please come to the dais, state your name and address for the record. Would Ms. Barbara Scannell please come up?
Good evening, Mr., Barbara Scannell, 8016 Carolina Lakes Way in Indianland. Can you hear me? Okay, there we go, all right. I just, what I'm passing out to you is information, at the last meeting we gave information, but this is information that you could use during this meeting and also possibly take at home and review it because I don't know, you don't have a lot of time now, but hopefully this information will help you not only for today but all future meetings as well. So I'm just going to give some basic information. This is about EMS and schools and first responders. Last year there were 969 coroner cases. That doesn't sound like a lot, but when you have to do the investigation and everything they do, that's a lot. There were 19,897 EMS service calls throughout the county, 6,389 fire rescue calls, and of those, over 3,000 were just in the Indianland Panhandle, and 81,626 sheriff calls. And why this is important is we don't have the resources right now in this county to address what we've got right now that's already been built, much less what's already been approved, much less what's coming for new development. And how it affects the entire county is if something happens up in Panhandle, last, I think it was last week, they had to send like sev, they had a total of seven requests for services at the same time in the Panhandle. They had to send units from District Two to go up there, which means now District Two doesn't have the units, which has to take from the other areas. So it's a domino effect, it affects everything. It's not just EMS, it's fire, sheriff, everything. So that's why it's important. The other thing on the first page that I gave you here, I'm just going to say this real quick, if you look at it right now, there are 3,159 units that have already been approved, they're in different stages of possibly grading, infrastructure, building units. In Lancaster County, between Highway Five and Nine, there were 3,929 units approved by Lancaster County, and the city approved 3,142 units, for a total of 10,230 units that are approved, not yet completely built. And then when you use the statewide standard for how many people that is, it's 2.4, so you times that, you've got 7,581 people potentially up in the Panhandle and Districts One, Two, and Five, 7,071 units times 2.14 is 16,970 people that are coming your way. So it's not just a Panhandle problem anymore, it's the whole county's problem. And then you put it all together, you get 24,551 people possibly coming into our area in the next few years. And you look how that happens, you've got in three years, 7,358 people just in the Panhandle. So thank you for your time, I'll be addressing you later. Oh, could you please take off these things and pass them back because I have to pay for this stuff? Thank you, bye.
That's all that's lined up for citizens' comments. Move into public hearing items for Planning Commission decision.
Mr. Chairman, do I, can I make a comment or ask a question? Is that allowed?
Yes.
Ms. Scannell, thank you for, yes, thank you for coming to share that information with us. May I ask how long it took you to put this together? How much, how much time did you spend collecting it? Yes.
Well, some of this information I did for the budget meeting, so at least four full days, and that doesn't include all the time it took to research it and gather it and do everything else, but I actually wrote for speakers, we had seven speakers at the budget meeting, I wrote all that, plus putting all this other stuff together. So yeah, it took a lot of time and effort, but we're worth it, right?
Absolutely. And I just, I say that because I really appreciate the information, and as we look at, you know, I know that your primary attention is to the Panhandle, but I think that as we grow countywide, that we are going to see more and more stress on the rest of the county, and just as you said, it's really going to take all of our efforts and attention to make sure that we grow smartly and that we have all the resources and infrastructure in place to continue to be the great county that we live in, so thank you.
I just, real quick, I worked for cities for 20 years and I dealt things on a regional, state, and federal level, so I do concern myself with all the districts and all the people in the county, so thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing items. Our first item is SD 2024-1350 Riverside Single Family. Mr. Blazek.
All right, can you hear me? Yes, I think it was a yes, okay, good. All right, starting off with a bit of an overview for the proposed development off Riverside Road, 251.51 acres. The applicant is the Colston Development Group. The owner is BNC Land Farming LLC. The intent is to develop 133 lot, single family subdivision, and is currently zoned rural neighborhood. And on the map to the left, you can see it's located there off Riverside Road and very close, right up against the Van Lake community. Now here are two more location photos of the site, first being an aerial view on the left, and then a, on the ground view on the right-hand side off Riverside Road. Now looking at the proposed preliminary plat, which was provided in your packets, you can see the proposed block lengths and overall structure of the development and of the 133 lots, connectivity index is 1.57, and the streets will be privately maintained. Now looking at some of the outstanding technical review committee comments, the first is the fire marshal, the proposed preliminary plat did not show utilities, and the fire marshal needs to measure the length from a fire hydrant to the, to a house, make sure it's within 500 feet of the fire apparatus. From the planning department, there were five block length segments that exceeded the maximum thousand-foot length for any block segment in the county, so this needed to be addressed, and one of the lots was less than an acre, which is the minimum lot size in the zoning district. The school district has capacity concerns since with all the approved projects in the pipeline, they may be at or near capacity. Looking at infrastructure in the area, the closest STDOT trip count station was located about a mile south at the entrance of the existing River Chase community, and shows traffic steadily increasing since 2022. For public safety, it's in the Van Lake Fire District, and the closest station is located off Old Hickory Road, and the closest EMS station is the headquarters off Charlotte Highway. For schools that would be affected, these would be the Irwin Elementary School, AR Rucker Middle, and Lancaster High School. This chart on the right was provided in your packets. And looking at, and referencing the comprehensive plan, the future land use category in, in the area here is rural, so this proposal would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So at this time, staff is recommending denial of this preliminary plat due to outstanding terracy comments. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also here.
Mr. Blazek, commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Ms. Curton?
Oh, I'm sorry. No. Have a que. Thank you, I have a question.
Ms. Henson?
Why did you say that the staff was denying it?
Staff's recommending denial due to outstanding technical review committee comments.
Okay. Matthew, do, I do have a question now.
Ms. Curton?
And when do you think those outstanding technical review comments might be satisfied?
So the applicant did provide a revised preliminary plat, but it was given, we informed the applicant that there wasn't enough time for staff and the rest of the technical review committee to review that, and then include that in the staff report that was sent to you all, but they wanted to proceed forward at this month's meeting.
Commissioners, any more questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Blazek. The applicant will come forward if you care to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Claire Folk. My address is 2328 Linear Avenue in Charlotte. I work for Seaman Whiteside, we're the engineering and planning company that put together the preliminary plat on behalf of the developer, Colston Development. I'm here to answer any technical planning or engineering questions y'all may have. As Matthew said, we have addressed their comments and resubmitted the plat to staff, however, due to the timing of the Planning Commission, it didn't make it to your packets, but they have been addressed, we have worked through them, revisions have been made to satisfy the comments.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Bear with me just a minute, I want to keep looking through it for a second. No questions, thank you, ma'am. All right, we consider ourselves into a public hearing. When I call your name, please come up to the dais, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Would Mr. David Basery come, come forward, please? I hope I didn't butcher your name.
I'm David, actually it's pronounced David Bosery, I live at 4099 Persimmon, you would have no way of knowing that, 4099 Persimmon Road in River Chase Estates, just down from the proposed development. I start by saying I don't have any basic problem with the idea of the development, I think landowners ought to be able to develop their land. I have two or three concerns that I'd like to state that go beyond what the technical comments and objections were, because I'm sure they've reapplied for those. The first is the lack in the plan of turning lanes on Riverside. So anybody who's driven Riverside would know that if you go 55 miles an hour, people will pass you, even on a double yellow. So that road is used at high speed. River Chase has turning lanes, so when cars need to turn into River Chase, they get off of Riverside and then can turn into River Chase. There are no turning lanes proposed for this, and it's, and there are hills coming from both directions, especially southbound coming from Five to the development, you're going to end up bringing 60 mile an hour traffic to a screeching halt if there's a car coming the other way so that that person can turn left, and then, you know, it's just not a tenable solution. So I think there need to be, I strongly believe there need to be turning lanes both north and southbound, a turning lane for the, especially for the people turning left coming south on, on Highway Five. The second is a question of timing. I know that Riverside and Highway Five is slated to get a roundabout, I believe construction's theoretically supposed to start in 2026 sometime. That is one of the most dangerous intersections in the county, there are serious accidents there once a month, and one of the biggest reasons for those accidents is that people get impatient, in the morning and in the evenings, to get across Highway Five or to turn left from Riverside on a Highway Five, you end up sitting there and then trying to beat a hole in the traffic. And the problem with an additional development before the roundabout is done is that you end up queuing cars up at Riverside and Five, and they get increasingly impatient, and that's when things get in trouble. So I don't know when they're planning on doing it, but I think the roundabout needs to be in place before COs are actually submitted. Last thing is very quick, the property owners clear cut that property three, maybe four years ago. So the net result is without screening trees on Riverside, we all get to look at the backs of the houses along Riverside Road. I think there needs to be some sort of screening requirement as part of approving the plat. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Barbara Scannell, would you please come back up? Name and address one more time for us, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Barbara Scannell, 8016 Carolina Lakes Way. Okay, what I'm going to do is I'm going to point out the EMS, this I'm going to talk about real quick. If you look at this, I broke it down by EMS station and the central part, then the Indianland part, and then the, if I mispronounced it, I'm sorry, Buford, Kershawn, He Springs area. If you look at the number of calls that each area runs, I will say sections one, stations one, two, and three, the EMS units that go, a lot of those calls head up to Indianland. So again, you have folks that are not having the same level of service. So I'd like you to take a look at that and think about for this development and future ones, how are they going to deal with this? Plus the 10,000 more homes that are coming throughout those areas. Okay, second thing is, I'm going to ask you to take a look at the Lancaster School District for District Five and Nine. I know you may have seen this before, and again, you may want to look at it at your leisure because you have nothing else to do at home, sorry. That's just a joke, obviously, but it's showing what's already been approved between Five and Nine. So as much as Indianland right now, schools are at or near capacity, you guys are going to be at or near capacity in the next few years, just with what's already been approved. And to full disclosure, I am on the Citizens Review Committee right now for the school district, looking at how we're going to deal with this growth. So then I also did one for the Panhandle, and the reason that it's different, I couldn't fit it on one page, is because they also have an intermediate fifth and sixth grade that we don't have in the other areas because we don't have enough places to put those kids, so they had to make the middle school intermediate and the high school to be the middle school, and that's a big issue. So again, it shows you what's coming. And as far as information about emergency services, I can tell you that other than the Panhandle, which has full-time firemen at each Station 10 and 14, the rest of the county is mostly volunteer. And now we appreciate our volunteers, the problem is the amount of growth that's coming, they are really having difficulties meet it. In River Chase, I don't remember what year, there was a house that burned to the ground because it took them 20 minutes to get there. We had several houses in Indianland, in Sun City where I live, three or four houses that burned to the ground when they were volunteer because they couldn't get there in time. They have to go to the station, get the engines, get whatever's coming, then drive to where it's going. So I just wanted to update you on that. So you have the information, just wanted to give it to you so you, when you make decisions, you've got the sp, suffix. And the information I'm giving you real quick is for the Panhandle, the last number I got was from February from the school district, and in May for the areas that are between Five and Nine. And in August, we should be getting the next update for you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes all the speakers signed up, so we consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you case SD 2024-1350 Riverside Single Family. Do I hear a motion?
In order to bring it to the
floor, we need
floor for a vote, I would like to recommend approval for the, for case number Sorry.
I got you.
For case number SD 2024-1350 Riverside Single Family.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second? A second, a motion from Ms. Francis Lou, and a second from Ms. Tinklinburg. Any discussion, commissioners?
Having brought it to the floor in a positive framework for approval, I would like to say I don't see how we can vote on anything other than what we have in front of us, and that was with a recommendation for denial by staff.
Ms. Curton?
Yeah, I have two questions for Mr. Blazek, Matthew. So is there a possibility to have a traffic coordinator to review the turn lanes?
So a traffic impact analysis was conducted for this development. Their TIA stated that turn lanes would not be required based on the generation of traffic for this, but currently that TIA received a not approved letter from Stephen Blackwell, our person who works with our consult, traffic consultant, so.
What's the difference between requirement and recommendation? Like, where's that threshold? Like, it's not required, but might it be a good idea?
I do know that the Planning Commission can require, you know, certain objects that potentially that staff may not be able to, that is an option.
Okay. Then my other question is, does our new UDO, and you might not know this, is it going to require a buffer to be included since they did a clear cut? Thank you. Hey!
Allison Harden, for the record, Director of Development Services. Under the new UDO, this property would not be available for subdivision until after five years from the beginning of the clear cutting. So since it was cut, if it was cut three to four years ago, it would not be available for subdivision until the land is rested for five years.
Thank you.
Ms. Tinklinburg?
Always so helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to remind the commission that neighborhood subdivisions don't move forward to counsel that we are the final say, that, being said, that I would like to see the full updated plan set before we make a decision, considering we do get to make recommendations like turn lanes and things of that nature. I'm not comfortable voting for something without having all of the information, so it's unfortunate that that wasn't something that could have, we could have gotten sooner.
Ms. Richards?
I totally agree with the gentleman's comment on the traffic and stuff. I drive through that area at least four or five times a month, and I've been going 60 through there on a double yellow line and have people come around me like I am sitting still, and that intersection at, at Five, I have been one of those, I call it just like playing Frogger, trying to get out onto, onto the road. So I was surprised that the traffic study didn't come up and say that there needed to be some turning lanes and stuff, and I, as someone who drives through there regularly, I, I don't think you can add that many more houses and that many more cars and not have some turning lanes and deceleration lanes to help ease some of it. I've, I've actually been passed on that curve right in front of your property when I was going 60 and somebody went around me that had been going 80, and blind curve, double yellow lines, it's horrifying.
Commissioners, anything else? I was out of order, I need to make a correction. Would the applicant like to respond to the citizens' comments that was made? Please, sir. That's fine. We have your name and address, but if the gentleman would like to speak, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Earl Coeston, I live at 61 Earl Coeston, I live at 61, 6123 Turkey Oak Lane, Indian Land, South Carolina. Y'all talking about the roads and stuff, and SC DOT has approved the plans and the traffic study and everything that we did over there that we were required to do. And they talking about the buffer along that road there, lots of trees. They didn't cut out to the road all the way down through there, and they cleared that. That was farmland. That was cleared for farming in there when I, on what it was planted out to be on it. So I don't understand. If they're going 80, 60, 80 mile an hour later, you're breaking the speed limit. Speed limit's 45, 50 there on that road there. So if somebody needs to put a police out there to slow it down and stop it or something on the thing, if that's, if that's the case on it, so.
Just wanted to add that the traffic, I'm not the traffic engineer, but the study did account for the future roundabout in the study, so that impacted the, the study in itself. It assumed that it was already there.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Back to our discussion here. I have a question that maybe Mr. Blazek, you can answer, or Ms. Harden, one of the Maybe both. I know she likes walking up to the dais whenever she gets a chance. We'll see what happens first. The clear cut comment, how many, how long ago was that, that it had been clear cut? Do you recall?
I do not recall when it was clear cut.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you, sir. Okay, commissioners, you have before you a motion to approve for SD 2024-1350 Riverside Single Family. Roll call vote, please.
Michelle Richards?
Denied.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg?
Denied.
Lynette Henson?
Denied.
J.K. McQuirriton?
Denied.
Jason Cavillier?
Our next item is public hearing
Mr. Cavillier?
To county council.
I'm sorry. Sorry, just for clarification, the subdivision plats do not have a time limit, so they do have the opportunity to make those adjustments, resubmit, and bring it back to you at a later meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Public hearing item, rezoning 2025-1025, Kershaw zoning correction for 232 West Richland Street.
I'm wearing a lot of hats tonight. So this was one of six or seven items that we heard last month with the Kershaw zone, were corrections to the Kershaw zoning map. They were properties that were either never zoned when Kershaw created its map, or they were annexed and not designated at the time they were annexed. At that meeting, Ms. Smith, who is the owner of one of the properties at 532, let me get this right, 532 West Richland Street, Kershaw, had some questions about the process of zoning and the impact it might have on her property, and asked that, that y'all would put this forward to this month so that she could have time to meet with staff and answer those questions. I did meet with her on the day after our, our May 20th meeting. She and I met. I prepared documents for her to answer her questions. At that time, she indicated she was satisfied. The questions are in your packet, page 61, and then the documents that I, I gave her are attached there. She had no problems at that time. She is here tonight, so if you wish to speak to her about that, she is here to answer questions as well. Nothing has changed since we heard this last month. All of the facts and evidence are the same, and staff recommends approval of this administrative request by the town of Kershaw. And for, we have a map. We're assigning Kershaw R6 residential zoning for this, which is what the surrounding Kershaw properties have. And this is just what I described, that we met, we talked, and we recommend approval. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. Ms. Smith, I'm halfway looking at you as an applicant. I'm halfway considering you an applicant here because you did have great concerns. However, we're going to come into public hearing for this one, so we'll consider ourselves into citizens' comments, and you're the only person signed to speak. So if you would please come up, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Robin Smith, 6 Setfair Lane, Greenville, South Carolina. Thank you, staff, for providing me with the answers to my questions. Sister Bryant, and I think Mr. Barnes also submitted something to me through an email. I have a few questions as, as a result of the last hearing after speaking with Ms. Bryant. I would like to know, this rezoning, because this property is closer to the end of 532, are there plans for something to be added there? I noticed that the document that I have talks about whether or not 532 could be property that could be either, let's say, rebuilt, if I wanted to, let's say, demolish that house and rebuild it. That is a neighborhood, and I'm just curious about that part, because 532, there's a little bit more property at the end of that. And my next question is, as a result of all of the changes that are being made in Lancaster County, does this have to do with the buildup of Lancaster County and Kershaw, South Carolina? Because I noticed that a lot of, let's say, builders are buying property in that area off of 532 or on West Richland Street. So that's my question.
We don't have a whole lot of answer, question and answer, back to
Okay.
To citizens here. However, maybe Ms. Williams or Ms. Jennifer can, can help you.
Okay. I can answer that this zoning request has nothing to do with anything going on in the county. This is the town of Kershaw making corrections to their map because they're getting ready to municipalities or anyone who maintains a zoning map or a unified development ordinance is required by law periodically to update their documents, and they're getting ready to update their unified development ordinance, and they want to get their map cleaned up before they undertake that process. It's part of the city of Kershaw's ongoing administrative effort, you know, in maintaining their, their laws.
Okay. I also noticed that in some of the answers to my previous questions last month, it mentioned making sure that we're complying with the state of South Carolina.
Right.
When I spoke with Columbia, they mentioned that each county is responsible for their own zoning. Will you explain that, please?
Right. The county has zoning, and the town also has zoning. Anyone who, any entity, any government entity that maintains zoning rules has to update those rules periodically, and they're getting ready to do that, so they want their map cleaned up so that they don't have holes in their map when they're getting ready to present this and to the council.
But there are regulations throughout the state for each county?
There's, each county has zoning regulations, and each municipality has zoning regula, or development regulations.
Okay. So that can vary depending on what county the property is in?
Yes, ma'am. But to answer your question specifically, the state has a comprehensive planning act, and that's part of the state code. And in that code, it gives counties and municipalities the requirements that they have to follow. And what Ms. Bryant is talking about is they have to update their documents. Every county, every municipality has to update their documents periodically. They're coming up on their timeframe, and one of those things is to ensure that all of their properties in their municipality meet the guidelines. And one of the guidelines is that it has to have a zoning, and that's what they're doing. They're just, the zoning is basically just an identifier for your property.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. We now consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you case number RZ 2025-1025, Kershaw zoning corrections for 232 West Richland Street. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Ms. Kiratun, motions for approve. Ms. Sheila Hinson, seconds. Any discussion, commissioners? All right, motion to approve rezoning 2025-1025, Kershaw zoning corrections 232 West Richland Street. Show of hands. Motion is unanimous to approve. And I would like to thank Ms. Smith for her concern and being, participating, taking notice. I apologize, there was a typo in the agenda. You are correct.
For catching that.
You are correct. Would clerk, please make a note that 532 West Richland Street was the appropriate address? Thank you again, Ms. Smith, for paying attention and being on top of it. Commissioners, our next item is rezoning 2024-0367 Old Hickory. Ms. Williams?
Ms. Bryant, can you please change the screen? Thank you. Commissioners, this item before you was one that was heard at your May, April meeting, and you requested postponement until this meeting. There was a subsequent comprehensive plan amendment that was complimentary to this rezoning, which means that the comprehensive plan was relative to the rezoning. As a reminder, this is off of Old Hickory Road, the 159.64 acres that G3 Engineering and Old Hickory LLC has brought for you. You heard the comprehensive plan amendment at last month's meeting. The applicants have requested that it be withdrawn from county council's agenda for June, and it will be heard there in July. So the comprehensive plan amendment and this rezoning will be heard at the same time by county council. These, again, are the photos of the property. You see the aerial view toward the almost right, and then pictures of the signs posting that we properly posted the property. Again, this is going back to the comprehensive plan background. The property is zoned rural in the future land use map. The area is designated, it's always been rural. It was zoned prior to 2016 as the R30, which was another large partial rural zoning. With the adoption of the UDO in 16, the official zoning became RN, rural neighborhood, and the comprehensive plan, future land use map designates this as rural. These are some maps. We tried to blow up the area there on the, the map for you to be able to show where the future land use map is. As we mentioned, this area is designated as rural. This is part of the transitional area around the city of Lancaster. And the proposed future land use map category that you heard with the last meeting was proposed as growth area. As a reminder to this body, you denied that comprehensive plan, you recommended denial of the comprehensive plan amendments last month. This site is adjacent to the west side of Roseland. Roseland is currently zoned MDR. They, because of the added infrastructure in the Roseland development, there's been lots of interest and lots of other developers coming into this area trying to develop. This does conflict with the comprehensive plan goal GL 1.2, which is to maintain low-density development patterns in the rural areas identified on the future land use map in order to preserve the agricultural enterprises and maintain the rural lifestyle. Again, this is the chart that you guys have regarding the schools, and these schools are Erwin, AR Rucker, and Lancaster High School. This property is under the jurisdiction of the Riverside Volunteer Fire Department, and the closest station is approximately three and a half miles away. The fire station is a non-career station, and response times are typically slower than fully-staffed departments. At this time, we do not have a recommendation formally for you because this, this rezoning is contingent upon the comprehensive plan amendment, and because council has not made a decision, I am hesitant to give you a direct recommendation. However, as a reminder, you did deny the comprehensive plan amendment, and this is contingent upon that. And the area that was identified as rural, the only thing that has changed since the comprehensive plan update, adoption last year, was the fact that there is water and sewer available in this area at this time. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Williams. Applicant want to come to the dais? Name and address, please, sir.
Dean Aldrich, 900 East North Street, Greenville, South Carolina. I'd like to thank the staff and the planning commission for hearing our rezoning tonight. If you have any questions, open to answer any of them. I'd like to say that from your comments from the comprehensive plan meeting, my developer and the owner are taking that into effect, and hopefully we can come to some type of agreement with Lancaster County so both of us can come to an, an idea of what the land should be developed like. That's it.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Now consider ourselves into public hearing. One person signed up to speak. Ms. Barbara Scannell. Name and address this time for me, please.
Hi again. Barbara Scannell, 8016 Carolina Lakes Way. Okay, a lot of this you've heard before, but because we have to address it at every public hearing, I'll just say it really quick. First page, 10,230 units already approved in different stages of development, about 24,000 more people. As far as EMS, they're struggling to keep up. They can't deal with what they've got now. So adding more is just going to make it worse for all of us who live in Lancaster County. As far as the schools, I gave this to you the last time. It's between five and nine. It shows you where they're at right now. It shows what county district they're in, what the capacity is, what the current enrollment was as of May 20th, and available seats, and unbuilt units. It's going to blow them out of the water. They do not have the ability to take on these, these amount of additional students. Nor can EMS, nor can fire, and even the sheriff department is. The percentages of deputies to the number of people currently living here, we're at like 1. something percent, and it should be 2 to 3% is statewide. I think, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that statistic with me, but there's, we're the lowest. There's nationwide, regional, and state, and we're down the lowest. And those people do a phenomenal job based on the amount of resources, all our first responders. And our 911 center also do a phenomenal job. So please consider, again, denying this, not because we don't want to have people be able to develop their land, we just need time be able to develop their land, we just need time for all our services to catch up, because we are in a whole world of hurt. And I want to thank staff also for mentioning about it being overburdening existing fire resources, and also that they are not career firemen, that they're volunteers. So I want to say thank you to staff for including that this time. So please consider this information. It's really important that we get our services, and our roads even, up to date, and get that taken care of before we take on any more. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Skinnell. I think between you and Ms. Smith, we give our run, our planning department a run for their money, you know?
I'm just going to say, I really appreciate the planning department. They're getting slammed too, so appreciate everything they do. And the only thing I was asked real quick is, part of what I got was from the planning website, and that would list, you know, the current number of housing units and, what are they called, multi-family units? And right now, it's, the latest one is from August for multi-family, September, and I know at one point they had more. I'm just going to offer, this is what I do, if they would let, I'd be happy to volunteer and get that up to date for you, because that would help folks like us and folks like you. So I'd be more than happy to do that. I'm already cleared by the sheriff department.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes all the citizens assigned to speak. We now consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you rezoning, case rezoning 2024 0367 Old Hickory. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved. Second. Make the motion to approve? Yes. Seconded.
All right. Ms. Lynette Hinson, motion. Ms. Kuratin, second. Commissioners, you have before you case RZ 2024 0367 Old Hickory rezoning, motion to approve. Roll call vote, please.
Francis Lou? Deny. Sheila Hinson?
Deny.
Michelle Richards?
Deny.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg? Lynette Hinson?
Deny.
Yuki Ma Kuratin?
Against.
Jason Cavalier?
Against. Motion is denied unanimously. We'll pass that up to county council.
In this next case, we have Pleasant Dale Baptist Church, which is proposing to zone 9.18 acres. That's zone residential neighborhood to institutional, to cojoin their property that they already own, that's institutional, to their property that's already owned institutional. Just to give you an overview, it's located at 1.65 Potter Road. The idea is to cojoin that 9.18 acres to the property located adjacent to their already Here we have some location photos. You see an aerial and the pictures of the signs that we posted. Give you a little history on the parcel. It's, the subject parcel is located at Graham Drive, south of Graham Drive and Potter Road. The property owner occupies, Pleasant Dale Church is the property owner which they're currently occupying. The parcel abuts, the parcel abuts up to the church, and the subject property, it's currently a, it's a pastor that has two residents on him that are not functional, that they plan to use this property for future use, which is undetermined at the point. All of the properties that are located around it, to the north, you have the Pleasant Dale Baptist Church, which is institutional. To the south of it, you have residential neighborhoods, and to the east, you have residential neighborhoods, and to the west of the property, you have low-density residential. And the subject property, oops, hit the wrong thing here. With the location of these properties, like I said, they, they're located, all of the properties located around it are located, are zone residential, which aligns with the comprehensive plan, which makes it easy for planning to recommend that we approve this property for the, we approve it for the zoning of residential neighborhood to institution. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, and the applicant showed up to answer any questions that you have available for him as well.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Ms. Lou.
I understand that the church wants this zoned institutional so they can continue using it as part of their church. What else could be done there? Just saying, if it was rezoned and sold, what could the new buyer put there under the institutional zoning?
Well, under that institutional zoning, mainly you could use it for religious purposes. Schools, schools and religious purposes fall under that category. Anything other than that, it would probably have to be rezoned. That, that's basically, you know, some of the things that fall, that I know that falls under that, that category.
No businesses could...
No, business doesn't fall under that category.
I was just looking at devil's advocate. I'm, I understand.
I'm going to stop and clarify one thing. They want to rezone it so that they can combine it with the property that they already own.
I was playing devil's advocate, if someone came to us, not this church...
Right.
...under the same situation, and said that is why they wanted it zoned, and then a couple months later decided to sell it, and what could a new applicant put there? Just playing devil's advocate, not because...
Right. So institutional property allows for churches, schools, religious facilities, and government offices.
Great.
So once it's rezoned, that's what is limited on that land.
Great, thank you. Just protecting us, it was a general question.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Thank you, sir. And the applicant is here? Would you care to speak, sir? Name and address.
James West. I live at 217 Gilz Creek Drive here at Lancaster, just not far from the church. But it's pretty clear cut, I mean, the property, the church bought it from a church member so the church will have additional property to be able to expand. We've just grown over the last seven years from 250 to over 700 in worship. So, the church is growing, so this is for future use. There are two residents on the property that we do not intend to occupy or use. We're trying to get those moved now.
Congratulations on the growth.
Thank you.
Praise the Lord. I just want to point out, my question was broad-based going forward. I understand that the church wants to use this and expand on their own.
Of course. There's a store, Lucky 99, that's located within 500 feet of the front doors of the church, and I think they recently asked for a home permit alcohol consumption, and so UDO does not allow that within 500 feet of the church doors, so.
You've got two minutes left.
If you have any questions, I may have...
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Like Judge Judy says, does it sound like you're losing?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We now consider ourselves into public hearing. No one is assigned to speak, so we'll consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you case RZ 2025 0857 Pleasant Dale. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve. A second.
Ms. Sheila Hinson, motions. Ms. Tinklinburg, seconds. Any discussion?
I have a question based on what the applicant just stated. So, am I, do I hear correctly that approval of this rezoning will null and void the application from Lucky 99?
No. State code allows for those to be 500 feet from the doors of the church, not the property lines.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, commissioners? Okay. We have motion to approve case RZ 2025 0857 Pleasant Dale. Show of hands. Motion passes unanimous for approval. And we'll send that up to council. Thank you, sir. Next item is rezoning 2025 Mardany and Norris.
Good evening, commissioners. So I'm presenting to you an application for a rezon request from Mardany and Norris. Thomas Mardany and Kyle Norris are here as the applicants. This is a request to rezone a property that is currently general business, or GB, and they're looking for MDR, medium-density residential. And the reason for this being is that they're looking to construct a single-family home. Here's a picture of the map. I know it's zoomed out a little bit, but Phil Thurman is where the lot is located. It's right off of Linwood. The map's a little zoomed out, but you can kind of get a gist of where it is. It's .44 acres, which is relevant information for here, because the reason, because I want to offer a little clarity on why they chose, or why they're requesting MDR, and it's because of the size of lot. It would have to be MDR to build a single-family home because of its size. It's very, it's quite small. No offense. So there's your map there. You can see the current zone and the size. The applicants are here. Here's some pictures of the property. You can see on the pictures on the ground, the facing east on Phil Thurman, down at the end, that's actually a rental property of townhomes, apartments. And then across the street on the right side, those are all single-family homes. There's, if you look at the aerial map view, there's five lots right there. One of them doesn't have anything on it, but the other four are single-family homes. And then the one on the end, directly to the left of their property, is utilized, although general business, is utilized as a church. And then, well, maybe you'll see it on the next one. Their MDR, that light blue in the bottom left of the map, that's MDR. So they do have some MDR zone across the street or close by, but that chart right there gives you an idea of what's around. To the east of them is the reservoir for the water company, so nothing's going to be going there. But to the north is general business. That lot directly north of them is actually a business, but everything else kind of in their area is utilized as residential, even though zoned, general business. Staff has a neutral recommendation for this request, strictly because approval or denial could be supported. However, what I would like to offer, just for your consideration, is that if this property were to be used commercially under the general business zone, it would be quite difficult due to its size. I'm sorry, I mean, I'm just going, let me sit down.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any question for staff?
I guess I don't understand why you wouldn't recommend approval.
That would fall in line with my opinion, and I don't want to personally present my opinion. Both approval or denial could be supported, because it is surrounded by general business, and you could leave it as general business, and it does align. But if you were to approve the rezon request and change it MDR, it could also work as well, since it's a residentially-used community, not a residentially-zoned community, but a residentially-used community.
Ms. Tinklinburg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How close is the closest MDR? It just, from that map, it looks like it might be a little spot zoning, so that has me concerned a bit.
We measured that from there, it's about 300 to 350 feet.
So close.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Thank you, ma'am.
Of course.
And the applicant is here? Name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Thomas Mardany. I live at 10017 Striker Gold Lane, Waxahatchee, North Carolina, and here to answer any questions y'all may have for us.
Do you have anything to add about the application?
It's primarily used as a neighborhood, and I think in the future comp plan, it's also a neighborhood. So I think a business would be more disruptive than anything, than a single-family home would be there. It's all rental properties and an eight-unit apartment building.
Can you tell us about your plans?
The plan is just to build a single-family home, like a three-bed, two-bath, 1,500 square feet. Nothing big, and it'd fit in with the area of the other remaining properties.
The price point would be within the properties that are already there, the rental properties in the...
Yes, ma'am. We don't build anything, no jury or anything crazy like that. It would be, our target goal is always for the mid-200s, so something attainable for the majority of people.
So you are not the occupant?
No, ma'am.
Oh, I see.
Any other questions? Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we now consider ourselves into public hearing. No one has a sign to speak, so we'll consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you case RZ 2025 1016 Mardany and Norris. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Ms. Tinklinburg? Okay, thank you. Ms. Tinklinburg, motion. Ms. Kuratin, second. Any discussion, commissioners? No discussion in that case. Commissioners, you have before you case RZ 2025 1016 Mardany and Norris. Show of hands. Motion passes unanimous. Pass that up to county council. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is TA 2024 0344 Satellite Parking.
If this looks familiar, it is, it should be. You have seen this report before. You saw it last year as part of a discussion about a potential, a property that had potential conflict with finding the amount of parking that they needed on their lot. We have been in conversation with the applicant and the applicant's legal team. Our legal team has been involved with this review as well. You made a recommendation to approve the amendment, or to, yeah, recommendation to recommend approval of the amendment in 2024. We are back here with you again because there is an addition to the proposed amendment, which is the section in point three, or three-point, that says that in order to have off-site parking or satellite parking for a piece of property, there needs to be a document or a contract or a agreement between the entity that wants to use the parking and the entity that has the parking, so that we don't create a situation where people will say, oh, there's parking across the street, we're going to park there, and they don't own it, have rights to it, or end up trespassing. And so that was added to this. The admin and legal staff have recommended approval of this amendment, and staff does as well.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
We now consider ourselves into public hearing. No one has a sign to speak, so we'll consider ourselves out of public we'll consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, case TA 20240344 Satellite Parking text amendment. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Ms. Richards motion. Ms. Tinklinburg, second. Any discussion?
I do. I have a question about the satellite parking situation. Like have, I know we talked about it last year, or the year before, I can't remember. But I'm just curious as to whether we've seen this precedent in any other places, and if we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's. Okay.
Yes, absolutely. First of all, the satellite parking is already allowed in the code and has been allowed in the code in the past two UDOs. But it was limited to the 600 feet. 600 feet being approximately two city block lengths. You see satellite parking most often used in urban environments where you have a lot of buildings that take up the park, take up the lot, and they don't have a lot of space, or where you have municipal parking, parking lots, or on-street parking where people can park instead of having on-site parking. So satellite parking is mostly used in those kind of areas in our experience and our review. Many, many communities, counties, and cities both use satellite parking when they have situations where you can't get the best use out of that land as well as the parking on the site. It's often used, it's, you'll see it a lot in historical downtowns. You'll see it on beach communities. And so it's existing. It's something that we have already. What we added last year was that if you needed to have satellite parking farther out than 600 feet, between 600 and I think maybe 1,200 or 1,500, I can't recall. It's on the report, that you needed to have the ability to have a shuttle for personal safety for the people that are walking to the facility. That is also something that has been used in other communities as well. And then for the additional discussion since that time, it came up that there are opportunities to park in other places, but it might not be the right of that person. Plus, there have been discussions about insurance issues. If you have somebody that's parking, you know, across the street from a place that serves alcohol in order to have a dinner and alcoholic drinks, and they trip and fall in the parking lot where their parking that doesn't belong to the entity that's serving alcohol and food, is there a liability issue? We've run that through. There typically is so that we put in the rules of this proposal, which was to have an agreement between the person that owns the parking and the person that wants to use it. We also have discussions about co-opting parking. A good example of that is when a restaurant uses parking at night that a bank would have during the day if they only serve dinner, and the bank has the customers in the day, and the restaurant has the customers at night, then there's overlap there, and we don't want to overpark the community if there's an opportunity to share. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Lou.
And we're more than 600 feet, and they have to have a shuttle. How is that enforced?
We'll have to review it and approve it as part of the plan. They would not be able to expand their use or build a use that depends on that without that being part of their operations and business plan. The way that we enforce that is that the occupations, or excuse me, the occupancy in the building is squared away by the fire marshal. And if they were, they need this parking to handle the occupancy. If that parking becomes unavailable because the shuttle's not available, then they no longer meet their occupancy loads. And the fire marshal would close the, close them down until they can achieve that.
I guess on a nightly basis, who checks to see if that shuttle is running or if people are walking?
We'll do it periodically through the code enforcement process that we have. We won't be there every single night because we don't have the staff enough to do that. But when we're aware of one, we will keep an eye on it.
I know somebody who's into planning. Thank you, Ms. Harden.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any more discussion? Commissioners, you have before you case text amendment 20240344 Satellite Parking, section 7.4.2. D. The motion to approve. Show of hands. Motion is unanimously approved. And we'll send that up to council. That concludes all the public hearing items. Now move into non-hearing items. Does anybody need a break? We're good?
We don't have much more, David.
No, there's only a couple.
Does anybody have any Tylenol or Ibuprofen?
I don't have any. Do you have any?
Does anyone have any Tylenol or Ibuprofen by any chance?
Thank you, Ms. Harden.
Harden, thank you. Then I'm good to go.
Ms. Jennifer has jumped up, so I don't think we're going to need Ms. Harden for this next one then, so.
No.
Next item is new road name 20251207. June submittals.
This is a group of road names from Sandra Burton at E911 Address thing. These were submitted via preliminary Platts and Civil Plans pursuant to section 6.4.11 of the Unified Development Ordinance. We periodically submit these names to you as she gathers them, reviews them to make sure that they're viable, and then submits them to us for your approval. These are the road names. For Shadow Moss, we have four road names on the left, and for Riverside, Single Family, there are several names on the right. She has reviewed all of these to make sure that there's no conflict with other names. She recommends approval for all of these. Just as an aside, these developments have not, do not have approved preliminary Platts yet. Their approval for names is good for a year after it's approved by you. If they have not succeeded in getting their plat approved, the names can be, I don't know how you would say, recycled. They're, that once again available for use, so they're taken off the roster if they, if the plans don't get approved. I'm here for questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
What does the letter, the letter that we received, what? Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. No question.
Not crazy about one of the names, but that.
We knew, we knew that would be the case.
Well, Ms. Brian, did Shadow Moss get withdrawn?
They withdrew and asked to come back in July. They were, they're revising, and they felt they could not revise. They would not be able to complete the review in time to be. So they withdrew, yeah.
And I am personally afflicted with the name crayfish because being from Louisiana, crawfish is the proper way to say that.
One of our, one of our Yankees, and I am one of them, but one of our Yankees said that crayfish is fine, and the rest of us said it should be crawdad, but.
Oh, I'm back. Okay, sorry. That was a close one. Okay. I'm going to let that slide.
Just this once.
Next time you get the gavel. Okay, um, let's see here. What do we do for non-hearing? Should we say, uh, thank you, Ms. Brian.
We are essentially the applicant, so county is the applicant.
Okay. Commissioners, you have before you new road name 20251207. June submittals. The list is in front of us. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I would, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Sheila Henson and Ms. Kuritzin.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to request that the Beaver Place be withdrawn. I just don't think it's a tasteful name. Personal opinion.
Any other thoughts? I don't know. Could we even do that?
We can't. We can approve or deny.
Yeah. The whole list.
It's up to you. You can approve the list, deny the list.
Well, since it's, there's no plat that's been approved or anything, and it's not active at this time, but I hate to get rid of a whole slate just because I think one is, I think it's kind of a laughing stock.
If there's been a motion to approve all of them, that needs to be withdrawn or, or voted on and with your denial or recommend for denial, you can take them one at a time, but that is up to the chairperson. If there is not a consensus that the name is problematic, then you can go forward with the vote.
I'm not thrilled by it either, but it is next to the road Otter River, so those are both water animals. So I think they were trying to go with.
It's a theme. But I think that the Public Works is going to be replacing that stolen sign a lot of times. Yes. Oh, you're right. The neighborhood will be replacing that sign several times.
Okay, so since we're having this as a discussion to avoid going through a vote for it, why don't we pass the discussion around? Ms. Richards said it doesn't bother her.
Okay. Yep, that's fine.
Ms. Kuritzin.
I'm with me.
Okay. Commissioners, you have before you motion to approve new road name 20251207. June submittals. Show of hands. Six, four, one against. Motion passes. Our next item is new road name 20251277 Sarah Lee Lane.
This is administrative action brought to you. A homeowner has requested a building permit to place a home on a private driveway off Linwood Drive. Since it's the third permit, our UDO requires that the private driveway be named. The homeowner has selected the name Sarah Lee Lane and has obtained the signatures of more than 75% of the land ownership of the surrounding parcels that access off that lane. We did receive a, an email today from homeowners, the one property that did not, we did not have a signature from. They, they suggested another name. Sandra looked at that name, but there were a lot of variations on Coffin because of the popularity of that name in this county, so she doesn't know that she could approve a name that was Timmy Coffin. And those homeowners are present tonight and did say to me that they have no strong objection to the name Sarah Lee Lane, but it was that, a family remembrance, that their, their parents originally owned all that property, so that's why they were asking. But we have, the applicant has met all the requirements, so we are not bringing forward the alternate name at this time because it was not part of the original application, and Sandra also does not feel that she would be able to approve it. So before you, the choice is Sarah Lee Lane.
Thank you, Ms. Brian. Commissioners, any questions? Would the applicant like to come forward and talk about it?
Don't know that Ms. Dudley is here, but the family who owns other, it's not a public hearing, so we can't have them sign up as a public hearing, but if you wanted to hear from them, they are here. They're the, the ones who did not sign. They were unavailable to sign, but.
Would you like to speak?
Their daughter-in-law can speak.
Good evening. So I'm Robin Gent. Do you want me to state my address for the record?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay. So 2045 Jack Robertson Lane in Lancaster. I'm, my parents, so my grandparents were the original property owners, and they were the original property owners of the driveway. Now, my parents do not have any objection to the Sarah Lee Lane. They just said for sentimental value, they would love to put that name into a family name. And of course, Coffin is a very popular name in Lancaster. So even that section, if you look down Linwood Drive, it's called Coffin's Crossroads. People who've lived here for quite some time can probably remember that. Our family is actually the one that donated the land to New Hope Baptist Church, which is where Coffin Crossroads resides. So that was one of the reasons why we wanted to do it in remembrance, and we couldn't think of a better name other than to remember a son who passed away early in childhood, of childhood leukemia. So we wanted to make sure that the name that my parents were going to be assigned to under this new name of the Sarah Lee Lane had some meaning to it, instead of just picking a name kind of out of the hat. So that's, that's his, they're not trying to, they just want to make sure that she has a way to her property and that she can proceed on. They were just offering that as a suggestion in remembrance. So thank you so much.
So with no outstanding objection, there's no way to bring forward that alternate name without going through the application process again and getting all new signatures. So we wouldn't be able to approve that other name tonight, and Ms. Dudley has fulfilled all the requirements for the name she has requested.
Ms. Brian, let's say we approved it. They could still come back with another road name change later if they wanted.
They could, they could file a road name change request at a later date, yes.
Just because I don't know, is that expensive?
It's $250, and that's largely the cost of, of the signs.
Administration. Thank you very much.
The actual sign from SEDOT, yeah.
Well, that's kind of like. Commissioners, any questions?
I just wanted to thank you, Robin, for coming forward, and so that Timmy's name lives on in remembrance tonight, even if we go with Sarah Lee Lane, that it was nice for us to know the story.
Okay. Commissioners, you have before you case new road name 20251277 Sarah Lee Lane. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Sheila Henson, and that was Ms. Kuritzin?
Thank you.
Any discussion? No discussion? Show of hands. Motion is approved unanimous. And that concludes the agenda items up until a presentation from Ms. Williams.
Yes, I'm going to make this short and sweet and as painless as possible. As you guys know, you all nominated Ms. Tinklinburg for Board Member of the Year. She was recognized last week at the banquet. For funny reasons, she did not get her plaque that night, and I would like to have the opportunity to present that to her tonight in front of her peers who nominated her.
That's a great idea. Congratulations, Commissioner Tinklinburg. You earned it.
You all. Thank you, April.
And for the record, I believe she was robbed, but it's okay.
Okay. Well, that gets us all the way through the agenda here. So unless one of you commissioners has anything to add.
Sorry, I have one more thing. That is the review of next month's agenda.
Oh, okay.
We have, we have four items on the agenda. A text amendment from MUSC and Lowe's. They're, they have joined forces to request an amendment of the signage regulations. It is similar to the amendment we passed, I think it was last year, allowing some variation in the size of wall signs, and they're requesting the same for, specifically for hospital medical facilities and for the, the large-scale food retailers. So we, we applied it to large-scale retailers. They're tweaking that definition to include large grocery stores and also hospital facilities because MUSC wants a larger wall sign for their property. Then after that, we have three preliminary Platts. We have Shadow Moss coming back. We have Silver Run continuing, and also a phase, Phase Nine of Edgewater, which is a small, fairly small. I think it's less than 200 homes, preliminary plat. And that's all we have for the July. And also, we do not have a workshop in July, so we will be sending you a packet for this.
Did you repeat? You said the Shadow Moss, Silver Run, and what else are we going to be going over?
It's a small preliminary plat for Edgewater, a Phase Nine of Edgewater.
I had the opportunity to watch the county council meeting this last go-around, and I noticed that while we approved the rezoning for the gentleman to, I don't know, who wanted to rezone from rural neighborhood.
Potter Road.
Yeah, on Potter Road, thank you. And I totally respect the decision, but, and I'm sure that my comment is going to be controversial, but I'm going to say it anyway. So we all come to the, this environment, any environment with biases, but as the sole double minority up here, I cannot let this issue go without at least putting my two cents on it. Because it's difficult to show up in these spaces a lot of time. It's challenging, it's intimidating sometimes, and I noticed that unfortunately the applicant himself didn't show up, and so it was denied, which is, you know, neither here nor there. And I don't know that his presence at all would have changed anything, but I did notice that there were just, there was no balance again in the comments who all came from, I don't know how to say this, so it was primarily Caucasian men who came to speak up, and we know, we know that the applicant was not Caucasian, but the council didn't know because he didn't show up. And I only say that to say, and I appreciate what Ms. Lou said about, you know, a home being the most expensive investment that we'll make in our lives, and that includes every single socioeconomic level. It's, the investment is monumental and sentimental. But I just feel like as we come together, as Lancaster continues to grow, we really need to pay attention because from an optics standpoint, I just want us to be a balanced county and grow in a way that is respectful and grow in a way that is welcoming to new people and that does not become elitist or a turnoff. And that is what I saw, so I needed to say that, so thank you.
May I comment on that?
Ms. Lou.
I know that we were influenced somewhat, I mean, even though it was five to one, that the other side of the street was zoned rural zoning, please help me, staff, where you can put mobile homes on.
Rural neighborhood.
Rural neighborhood. And so I think the feeling also was, well, what does one more across the street matter? I drove out there after we had voted. I meant to do it beforehand, and I kicked myself and I forgot what I promised myself I would do, I would look at it. It's beautiful farmland with houses and cows. No imminent plans for mobile homes, so I thought, I think if everybody would have seen that, they might have voted differently, and I can't speak for anybody, because it says it on paper, well, they can do it on the other side of the street, it's easy to think, well, what's one on this side of the street? But if you actually go out and look at it, it was like, oh, these people are not going to be subdividing and doing mobile homes. And I don't know if council members went out and looked at it, but I think, I totally understand what you're saying about culture and, but it's such a slippery slope if Mr. Caucasian man comes up here and asks for something, and we look at the rules and deny it, but Mr. Hispanic or African-American or whatever comes up and we say, well, their culture is different, I think it's such a slippery slope to say we're going to start making decisions based on the heart. I was on BZA for eight or nine years, and there was a time when every decision, it seemed, was if you came up there and said, I want to do this for my grandma, you got it. And it was very frustrating that we just took the rules and said, well, if grandma wants it, grandma gets it. And so I totally understand what you mean about maybe looking forward, looking the people who make the rules, but I think if we start making decisions based on the heart, which is obviously a wonderful thing to have a big heart, but I think we could get into trouble if we start saying that we're going to go based on what they normally do rather than what is written, is written as good for the county, if that makes sense.
No, it totally does, but I don't know that it was a heart decision, like we rezoned institutional to, we rezoned rural neighborhood or rural to institutional tonight on Potter Road as well. I'm only saying that I would just, I would have liked a more balanced conversation around, you know, there was just a lot of throwing around of trailers, which we didn't even know that he was actually going to put one nun, and like he was, it was just an option, so that's, thank you.
And I have a question based, not really on that, it came to my mind tonight when we are rezoning to institutional, and it's for staff, basically, if I have a property and I want to, the parcel next to me, I can't think of a good example, but is something, and I ask for it to be rezoned, and I have a great reason that sounds wonderful and harmless and so forth, and it's granted, is there anything that prevents me from the next month, the next day, flipping it to someone who wants to take advantage of that new zoning? Does that make sense? That, do they have to do what they say they're going to do with it, or once we rezone it, it, the highest bidder gets the land?
Rezoning shouldn't technically ever be considered based on the use. Rezoning criteria is basically, does it fit the comprehensive plan? Does it fit the surrounding properties or properties that are close to it? And those are the two basic rules. The other things that you kind of can take into consideration are the current uses, like the zoning tonight that was zoned general business, but all of those properties were non-conforming. So even though there wasn't a residential zoning right beside it, you could justify that change because there were residential uses already there. They could go and build whatever is allowed in that zoning classification, which MDR is limited mostly to single-family homes. But in general, the, a lot of the things that sometimes are asked aren't really relevant to a zoning. It's a person's right to see if they fit the comprehensive plan and they have that use, that it fits into those two items. We also can't make decisions based on what might happen in the future.
Thank you.
Well, I would add for both of you that our duty here is to apply the comprehensive plan, the strategic plan, future land use to any of these cases that are brought forward to us. It's kind of the same thing about talking to anybody in public about it. If you go somewhere that you're not entitled to, it could blow up in your face. So use caution when you use words like heart when applying what is a scientific process. Now, we do have the power of safety, that if somebody wants to build a house out in the middle of the street, and for whatever reason the planning department decided it was a good idea, I think it's up to us to say something. But I would caution you that use what you have, the tools provided, they're out there for everyone else to see, and it's for our protection and theirs. So with that in mind, we are a bunch of volunteers up here, and everybody works really hard to get here on time, everybody works really hard to get around, and for that matter, going and seeing your yellow signs is the best way for you to be involved and to feel what happens in the community around you. You don't necessarily have to engage with anybody, and in most cases, it's probably better if you don't. But keep in mind that we have guidelines and that anything outside of those guidelines could be brought to question. So with that in mind, if anybody has anything else to add? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion. I second.
Ms. Sheila Henson and Ms. Kiratson. Adjourn.